I'll just slip.
Good evening, this is the Thursday, March 11th, 2021, meeting of the Stoughton Planning Board. I entertain a motion to open the meeting.
So made.
Thank you, a second please. Thank you, a roll call vote, Mr. Caba.
Yes.
Mr. Demuse.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Garland. Mr. Garland.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair votes yes, the meeting is now in session. The first item of business is Chairman's comments, I need a motion to open up Chairman's comments.
No more.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, roll call vote, Mr. Garland.
Yes.
Mr. Caba.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Demuse.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the item is now open. I'm just, I just have one item to disclose to the board. With respect to one of the applicants this evening, 11 Evans Drive. I contacted the Ethics Department on behalf of myself. Because I drafted a lease in which the applicant was a tenant. I represented the landlord in that transaction. For the board's interest, the tenant is no longer in that building. And the building is not the premises involved in the site plan approval of this matter. I was advised by the attorney of the day. That I needed to file a disclosure under Chapter 268, capital A. Section 23B in parentheses. Which I duly done on March 2nd with the board's agreement. To satisfy that state law requirement. My duty to disclose that to the board and to the proceedings this evening. Anybody from the board have any questions?
No.
Hearing none, I now need a motion to open up Lawlor Lane lighting discussion.
So made.
Thank you, can I have a second? Thank you, roll call vote, Mr. Caba.
Yes.
Mr. Demuse.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Garland.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, Mr. Charbonneau, do you want to present that on behalf of Eric Díaz?
Sure, Joe, I forwarded an email. Eric sent an email on March 4th. The board, he said, as you know, at the last planning board meeting regarding the lighting for Lawlor Lane, the chairman asked us for some information on the proposed wattages. And estimated annual cost for each option. The applicant has looked into the request and come up with the following. The LED lamp wattage is 54 watts on both the streetlight option and the driveway light option. The cost electricity is 10 cents a day or $36.5 a year for each per fixture. If possible, we would like to resume this discussion and hopefully resolve the issue at the next available meeting of the planning board. The applicant is working with National Grid on the electrical design for the subdivision, and this is the last remaining piece of that puzzle. Please review and feel free to give me a call with any questions or concerns, thank you. So, given that information, I'll just, you know, leave it up to the board to decide if they're comfortable with the option that was presented by Lawlor Lane for the for the individual lights for each home in that subdivision.
I believe it was Mr. Garland that raised the question about what the cost was to the town per fixture, and I think that's why we required the applicant to provide that information.
Right.
I wasn't asking about the cost, I was more concerned with what sort of deed restrictions it places on the individual homeowner because I think the last time this was presented, it was thought that the lights would somehow be like mounted to a mailbox. And it just seems, or is this a different one?
I mean, yeah, but in instances like this, Jonathan, there's really no deed restriction, just becomes a feature that comes along with the house. Similar to anything else, so it's not necessarily a deed restriction because there's no easement, there's no, you know, legal legal document that goes along with this, it'll just be part of the feature of the house when it's sold is that they will have a light attached to the mailbox and have a standing pole light, so I don't think it affects any deed restriction or anything like that, there's not conservation land on it or anything, so.
Yeah, no, I don't mean that, I just mean if a homeowner wanted to change out their mailbox, they can't. That's all I'm saying, it just creates another level of, you know, something that they're not allowed to do, I guess. That was my only point.
Yeah, and kind of like a homeowners association, I mean, when someone moves into a neighborhood with a homeowners association, they're made aware of that, so again, that's part of the thing where, you know, if they want to buy the house with the mailbox with the light, they will, if that's something that's going to be a deal breaker for them, then they won't, so. That's the way I look at it, it's gonna, you know, it's again, they don't have to buy the house if that's something that's important to them.
Yeah.
And Jonathan, that's becoming more and more, if you go to the huge subdivision that was done over a decade ago on James Massey Lane and that area of town off of Central Street. There's central mailboxes for certain blocks. You don't have the ability to have an individualized mailbox with your own design and whatnot.
Right. The post office is actually, within the last 10 years, the post office has started to enforce in new subdivisions. With any subdivision with more than, I say, I think it's three homes. They're really pushing for mail kiosks, so you're right, Joe, that's been, you know, especially in big subdivisions of, you know, 80, 90 homes. They're having them put in a handful of mail kiosks rather than doing home delivery, so that's definitely something that's becoming more popular.
And I know your concern was that we're taking away some freedom of individuality, but frankly, it's vastly disappearing from these tract developments and it's in Stoughton in many places. So, I doubt it's going to be a detriment to the purchase and sale of houses on that street.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm generally okay with it, I guess I support John's point about if you, you know, are given this option at the outset and you choose not to purchase the house because of that, then that's your choice.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Demuse.
The time that the light goes on is I assume going to be on some sort of timer, is that going to be a requirement? And replacement of bulbs, there was some discussion that when the house was built, they were going to give them a couple of extra bulbs.
And the applicant wasn't opposed to that, and we can make that a condition of approval with respect to that. And make it an addendum to the decision.
Okay.
I just wonder, Mr. Chairman, how do we enforce that? How do we make sure they give each homeowner a couple of bulbs, that's, I mean, you know, I understand the point, I just think we're really walking a fine line between, you know, kind of, you know, are we going to start telling them what color the door needs to be, you know, things, I'm just concerned about that, that we don't want to micromanage a subdivision too much.
Well, I don't think that's a micromanage, and number two is, it's going to be up to the developer, when he sells the lots, to communicate that requirement.
Okay.
It is going to be in the, we'll find some way of incorporating that in the legal documentation file at the registry. We'll work with the applicant and try to get that tied in. The only concern I could see from Mr. Demuse, I don't think it's the expense of the bulb. But I think we're going to ask Mr. Díaz to make sure that the fixture has a bulb that's readily available, such as at Home Depot. I have some fixtures in my home that I really have to hunt for replacement bulbs because they're not something I can buy in Home Depot. So, to make sure that that doesn't happen, we'll make the approval of the fixture conditioned upon the bulb being readily available at a home center or hardware store.
Right, that's a good point, I think that's the best you could do, Joe.
Yep, I think we've, there's much to address, but so with respect to that, we'll communicate that to Mr. Díaz and we'll wait to hear back from him.
I will, okay, so do you want to take a vote on that, Joe, to make it official?
Yes, can I have a make a motion to approve the applicant's proposal to use mailbox, the lights at each individual house in the mailbox that have light sensors, I think they weren't going to be time sensors, I think they're going to be the light sensors.
Right.
So that's the motion, unless anybody wants to make a change to that motion, I'll ask for.
I so moved with this to relations, in terms of the quality of the light sensors.
Thank you, Mr. Caba, can I have a second to that, Mr. Caba's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Roll call vote, Mr. Garland.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Demuse.
Yes.
Mr. Caba.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous approval of that motion, thank you very much. Now, moving on to item three on our agenda. The petition of Boston Solar Company LLC regarding 11 Evans Drive, can I have a motion to open up that matter?
So made.
Thank you, Mr. Demuse, a second please. Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Garland.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Demuse.
Yes.
Mr. Caba.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Now with that, I will read into the record the legal notice for this proceeding, as soon as I can find it. Mr. Charbonneau, would you be so kind as to load that if you could?
Sure, let me just pull that up.
It is under a pile on my desk here with a series of plans and
Let me just find that, thank you.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'll explain to any member of the public that's joining us. Our process for the public engagement of this and the way in which the hearing will be conducted. The applicant will be allowed to make a brief presentation. After which, the town professional staff will be asked to opine on that application. And then the board will ask questions, and then the board will open it up to members of the public. By using the raise the hand function on the meeting details slightly below the screen. And I will recognize as the hand is raised. Mr. Charbonneau and I will be watching for those raised hands. But with that, a public hearing will be held by remote participation on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. On the petition of the applicant, the Boston Solar Company LLC, 55 Sixth Road, Woburn, Mass. The owner of Green Flash LLC, 81 Chase Run Road, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, represented by Jacobs Driscoll Engineering Incorporated, 50 Oliver Street, Eastern, Mass. 02356, for site plan approval under Section 10.6. Site plan approval of the Stoughton zoning bylaws to construct solar canopies over the existing parking area on the property identified as 11 Evans Drive. Further identified on assessors plan number 53, lot 58, and located it in the industrial zone district. Participate, call phone number 1617-675-4444 and enter PIN 7410560584336 hashtag to participate via Google Hangouts. Please follow this link, meet at google.com/ tuf-bnqj-yho. This link can be copied and pasted into your web browser. In the event that these measures are unsuccessful or inconvenient.
Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's a V, VHO.
VHO.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, this link can be copied and pasted into your web browser. In the event that these measures are unsuccessful or inconvenient, a recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or Stoughton Media Access Corporation as soon as possible after the meeting. The site plans can be viewed at the Office of the Stoughton Planning Board, second floor, Engineering Department, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. During normal business hours by appointment only, per the town manager's policy. Could you scroll up, Mr. Charbonneau? The petitioner and/or his representative or any other persons desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Town of Stoughton Planning Board, Joe Scardino, chairperson. Published in the journal Sun, issues of February 24th, 2021, and March 3rd, 2021. Will the applicant and/or his representative identify yourself and come forward?
Hello, Greg Driscoll, Jacobs Driscoll Engineering, representing Boston Solar tonight. Also with us is Don McCormick of Boston Solar. Who wanted to give some opening remarks regarding the solar canopies. Don, are you prepared?
I am. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present. I just wanted to briefly mention that, introduce the team of the people who are present this evening, we have from the property owner and the ultimate owner of the solar canopies. We have David Greenblatt and I believe Gary Lowenstein may also be present. And then from the Boston Solar team, we have our Director of Commercial Operations, Jeff Constantine, and Project Manager, Lindsay Grindel. Who all of us would be able to answer any specific questions that come up. But really, I think with, in the interest of time, we're happy to turn this over to Greg Driscoll, who will present the plans that you see and walk you through what we hope to accomplish. So with that, thank you.
Chairman, can I speak for a second?
Yes.
Just as a matter of disclosure, this site is a site that I've done work on with my company and the client is a former, David Greenblatt is a former client of mine. I'm not presently doing any work for him, but I wanted to just advise the board that he has been on my client list for the best.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for that disclosure, it's duly noted in the record. I'm sorry, to the applicant, you can continue.
Sure. Okay, so the applicant, Boston Solar Company, proposes to install three solar canopies for the existing parking lot located at 11 Evans Drive in Stoughton. This right here that John's brought up is the existing conditions plan. So the locus of the property is the easterly side of Evans Drive and the northerly side of Central Street. Evans Drive is a dead end road in the industrial zone and that access with Central Street, the property is bordered by residential RC zone to the east. And so there's a residential use directly east to the property. And industrial business uses to the north and west. So the applicant proposes to obtain the necessary permits to install three solar canopies, this is the proposed plan right here, those dashed outlines over the parking lot are the solar canopies. And below, we are showing the striping for the parking spaces. Currently, the use of the existing building at 11 Evans Drive is a kids' sports indoor playground and childcare facility. Proposed site construction will not increase the amount of impervious area on the property. Know it will reduce any of the green space. It will have a total of 42 parking spaces, 28 parking spaces are required for the use, so there's a surplus of 14 parking spaces on the site total. Pro site construction will include installing support columns for the canopies and striping around them, that's why you see some striped out areas for the parking space striping. In order to give space for the canopy supports and keep vehicles sufficiently away from them. Installation of conduits, underground conduits for the connection of the electrical connection from the solar canopies to the utility pole on the street. We'll also be relocating the dumpster pad straight off the first entrance drive, you can see there. And putting it in a dumpster enclosure per border health regulations. And also, we are adding updated handicapped parking signs as noted by someone from the police department during our pre-application meeting. And also, there will be, new site lighting will be installed underneath the canopies to light the parking lot. And we'll be installing sedimentation erosion controls around the areas that will be disturbed during construction, also if you go up one, John, that is the fire truck turning plan. So earlier in the process, actually before Boston Solar got us involved, they had already started discussions with the fire departments about access to the site and what they would require. So, the heights of those canopies and this turning path and everything has been shown to the fire department and they are good with all that. The next sheet is the landscaping plan. And we're pretty much showing there is all existing landscaping on the property. Up in the upper left portion of the site on the plan here are additional plantings that we had added. It has come late from a neighbor, from the property owner, that they have an agreement with the neighbor to allow him to cross over that area, to pass and repass over it. The neighbor also mows the property for the property owner. And that barn that's shown right off the property over there has a garage door in the direction of this property, so they'll be looking for us to remove those plantings that they don't think that screening is wanted or required due to the agreements between the properties for access over there.
On that point, sir, we're going to need to hear from the abbot, and we're going to need to see those agreements. You're talking about granting easements, those will have to be recorded and drafted.
Okay, they don't have an official easement, but we are looking to get a letter from the from the abbot stating that they're
Well, that's the only, that only runs, easements run with the land, they must be recorded since they may take place for over one year. So that's a legal requirement, it's not the board's. In order to have an enforceable against subsequent owners. Because it's going to bear on another discussion that we're going to have in a little while about buffers between the high district and the residential district, so I thought it was apropos to mention that right now.
Mr. Chairman, does the easement that they're talking about doesn't really have anything to do with the solar project that that they're doing on this project, so I think the only reason the easement was mentioned was because they were removing some landscaping, but I don't think that easement really has anything to do with the solar project.
Mr. Kelly, with all due respect, the charge of the board is to look at the entire site and any alterations thereof. And with respect to subsequent comments by myself and other members of the board will bear on that. So with that, I do take opposition to your
It was just a question, that's all, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't a comment.
Okay. I'm sorry, the applicant may continue.
That's pretty much it, that's the overview of the project. Unless I have to add anything?
With your permission, I would just add one more comment to Greg's on the subject of the of the landscaping plan and the conversation with the neighbor. There was no change proposed, so I just want to be clear that what is being suggested here is that the neighbor has simply asked that there be no trees put into that area. There are none there now. We are not suggesting that any should be put there. So they're showing some trees as a landscaping feature. We simply wish, or the neighbor has requested and the owner of the property, of both the residential property and 11 Evans Drive have, are suggesting that nothing be done.
We'll address, I'll address that further in discussions during the landscaping discussion, I want hear from the town staff after the applicant's been allowed their presentation. Is that it, Mr. McCormick?
I turn to Greg, is there anything further on the plan that we haven't brought up at this point, Greg?
No, there, we do have a narrative of our waiver requests on and stormwater management. Just to say that we're not increasing the pervious area on the site at all, so stormwater, we don't believe is required. Minimally disturbing the ground to put those posts in, and these solar canopies are not like one contiguous roof structure, there's space in between each solar panel, so they're not completely impervious. So rainwater will get through them. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Anything else before I switch to the professional staff?
Nope.
You'll be able to comment after we've gone through the first set of speakers with respect to this project.
Responses to Mr. Charbonneau's memo that he sent out a few weeks ago.
I'm sorry, sir.
We put together a response to comments letter to Mr. Charbonneau's memo from a few weeks ago, from his review comment, so we can discuss that.
First, I'm going to turn to Mr. Horstfeld, Mr. Charbonneau will comment afterwards. Mr. Horstfeld, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a chance to review the plans and the application package. You know, this site seems to be a good location for this type of project, fits in with the the goals of the town's master plan to add some sustainable energy sources, so this is a good opportunity to add some green energy to the town in an existing parking area, so. We did take a look at the plans and one of the main concerns that I had, and I know that the fire department had that as well, was was access in and around the site. I wanted to make sure that the canopies would not obscure, you know, safe passage through and around the site. The applicant put together a diagram that shows the path of the fire trucks traveling through the site. But it's really contingent upon the height of the canopies, being sure that those fire trucks and the garbage truck can make its way underneath the canopies. The height of the canopies, of any plans for the canopies, were not submitted to our office for review, so we didn't that was a concern of mine, so if that information has been given to the fire department, I'd appreciate that being sent over to the engineering department so we can take a look at that. The applicant had noted that the there will be lighting underneath the canopies, I think that's important, the only lighting for the parking lot as it stands today, there's some wall packs on the existing building. And there's one light pole in the landscaped island at the, in between the drive aisles at Evans Drive. And that will be obscured by the canopies, so lighting underneath the canopies will be important so that it's not dark underneath those structures. And we'd like to see a photometric plan to accompany that application there. The site is surrounded by bituminous concrete curbing, and most of which is broken up and it's really non-existent around the existing parking lot. The site plan regs and zoning bylaw require that paved areas have a durable curb around its perimeter. So that would need either repair or replacement. Typically, the planning board is looking for vertical granite curving along the perimeter of of commercial industrial parking lots, so the board should consider what type of curving would be appropriate. so the board should consider what type of curbing would be appropriate for those applications. I'd like to note, too, that, I missed this on my circulation comment. The driveway, the south driveway, the one closest to Central Street, is less than 24 feet wide, which is the minimum width for two-way traffic. So that either needs to be widened up to provide two-way vehicle traffic, if that's what they intend to continue to use. I think that's how it's used today. Or one-way designation needs to be specified for the parking lot, and that would be accomplished through striping and signage. As far as the landscaping, you know, the board should consider whether or not the residential property will be adequately screened. We've heard discussions about, you know, the requirement for the pine trees or evergreens that are planted in that upper corner. That should be considered, but there's also some existing landscaping on the landscaped islands adjacent to Evans Drive. So there's existing landscaping in there. I think the applicant's proposing to just loam and seed and remove those existing plants. I think they should consider redistributing them elsewhere on the site. And there's some electrical equipment going in the center island between the access drives, a switch transfer switch or something like that. That equipment should be screened from view with some landscaping or fencing. We noted that the snow storage areas need to be added to the plan, and an overall operation and maintenance plan should be submitted for all site components, paving, fencing, landscaping, and so forth. The applicant requested a waiver from providing a stormwater analysis, which I think is reasonable for this application. There's no new impervious cover. However, we do recommend that the board require the applicant to be sure that the existing catch basins on site have the oil-water separated over their outlets to provide water quality treatment. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Horstfeld. Mr. Charbonneau?
Thank you, Joe. So I did receive some information from the applicant yesterday, the response to comments that Mr. Driscoll mentioned. And also, I did receive photometric plans. However, with the board's policy of receiving information, at least a week ahead of time, I made Greg aware of that, that I would not be distributing it to the board, because we do try to respect that timeframe unless we're in extraordinary or unique circumstances. So I will be distributing that information after this meeting for consideration at the next public hearing. So he has provided that information, so Craig and the rest of the board, you will get that here in the next couple of days. So, you know, right now, I can't speak to the responses to my comments. I'll have to take a look at that. But other than the thing, you know, a lot of my comments overlap with Craig's comments. And, you know, I'm glad the applicant said that they're going to coordinate with the Stone Police Department, because that was one of my overall comments, is that they should make sure that the police department is happy with their handicap signage and that they meet the town's regulation. And also, something that the board always wants to be reassured of is the applicant should confirm that the fence proposed around the dumpster enclosure completely obscures the dumpster from view. And also, Greg, you should also, have you checked with the Board of Health just to verify that the proposed dumpster pad location complies with the Board of Health regulations? So they do have some say in the dumpster. So I would just check in with Larry Perry and just make sure they're okay with that. I don't see anything that would raise a red flag, but if you could just make sure of that. That's it for my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Now for the board comments. I'll open up the board's comments. Mr. Driscoll, I believe in your paperwork, you indicated that you're going to be shearing trees?
Sharing trees? I'm not sure what you're...
There's no shearing of trees to, in order for the...
Oh, trimming trees? Yes, there's a, on the landscape plan, there is a, on the northerly, along the northerly property line, some of those trees will be cut back a bit between the two business uses.
Those are, is that, does that board of the RU, the residential district?
No, that's in the opposite direction on the industrial districts.
I see. We want to have some ideas to how far those are coming down?
Okay, it's shown on the landscape plan and the other plans as a proposed tree line to where it's going to be cut back to, shown on the plans.
Well, you're talking about shearing trees from the top down, am I correct? You're leaving some of them, but you're shearing them?
Yes.
Well, we want to know how many and how far. Because frankly, usually in a commercial development, we require a PVC fence around the perimeter. So except where there's substantial natural buffer. So we're trying to determine that. I have visited the site. There are at least three residential structures that were direct to butters. There was the barn structure that you referred to earlier. There's a very small house that's directly behind the rear area of the building, and then behind that's a brand-new constructed house, all in full view of that premise, with very little buffer between them and the premises itself. In a situation like that, as I mentioned, we would require a PVC fence. I know there's a chain link fence there right now. It doesn't provide much screening. It does provide a barrier, but that barrier is not a screening barrier. The other issue I wanted to discuss is Mr. Charbonneau touched upon the dumpster issue. Whatever dumpster you use, it has to be surrounded by a PVC fence, high enough so that the dumpster you select does not appear above the plane of the fencing.
Okay, we're currently calling a six-foot vinyl fence, stockade fence right now, so I'll make sure that that's going to work with the...
Including the gate, and the gate, we've allowed substitutions of aluminum coil powder coated, I'm sorry, aluminum powder coated gates, if he's concerned about durability. But those are above and beyond the Board of Health requirements for the dumpster, just so you understand that. We haven't received any issues regarding the effect of shading of that canopy on the neighboring properties. That's quite a substantial structure.
The height, Tom, the height of the canopies, it's 12 on the low end, correct? And what is it right now?
That's right, yeah, 12 on the low end. I don't recall exactly. It would take me too long to be, appropriate to dig it up now, but it's, I think, 13 and a half on the high end. I'll have to check. It's only a, it's a 5'3", so it's not much.
Shadow casting and sun obliteration on the neighborhood properties?
It's all below the trees for the neighboring properties. The trees are a good 10 feet or 20 inches taller.
I was down at that site today, and I did not see that kind of shading between. I believe it's a white house, and then there's a beige, brand-new house behind that structure. Not behind the canopy, but behind the building itself. Remember, we look at the entire site. When you come from site plan approval, it's not just the canopy. It's the entire site gets opened up.
Understood.
And that's why we're going to talk about, I'm going to, the other thing I want information on is all the signage on the property, on your zoning matrix. I know you're not asking for any additional signs, but I want to know whether all the signs on the property comport with zoning. And now I want to talk about, oh, I want to ask you a question. Why didn't you consider roof mounting those units? They're much less onerous than a canopy of the size you're talking about.
Well, there is roof-mounted solar. There is no space available that has solar exposure. But also, obviously, it's somewhat subjective, but it is broadly considered in the industry, but also by the state of Massachusetts, that canopies are actually a preferred sighting for solar because it serves a dual purpose and it uses space that's asphalt. So it's generally considered a very ideal sighting. But it also needs to be aesthetically done, and we sent some photos with the plan as well of what these look like. They're designed to be attractive-looking structures.
Well, that brings me to another point. We usually require color renderings, and we'd like to know what the color of that structure is going to be?
Yes, the photos that we supplied are the color of the, so they're identical to the structures.
I just wanted to ensure that, because they become part and parcel of the, they should be an exhibit attached to the plans.
Okay, John, we included those with the application report. This should be the last couple pages of that.
Yeah, but I don't have the application report. I think what Joe's saying is it needs to be added to the actual plan set.
Now I want to move to the landscaping, and Mr. Horstfeld's observations were in fact right on point. The structure, the whole premises are very poorly landscaped. I understand it's at the entry of an industrial park, but I can show you some gas stations, the Sonic, the Hampton Inn. They're all industrial, at the Hampton Inn, it was an industrial area, but there were substantial plantings required. We like to see some color diversity, some, you know, yellows, reds, whites, other than green. And I believe the only thing you're proposing are six white pines that you're asking to remove because the abutter wants clear access in that corner of the property. So certainly, some landscaping along the front of Evans Drive and along Central Street would go a long way towards that particular objective. Taking the plantings out and replacing it with no plantings, but just grass is really not acceptable as far as landscaping is concerned. So we'd appreciate your attempts. If you want some guidance, in the past, we've offered a meeting at the planner's office to discuss in more detail the landscaping proposal. You're welcome to take advantage of that option as well. I think that concludes, and the granite curbing certainly in areas that receive high amounts of vehicle traffic. I know you have a bus. I suspect it's going to be plowed. The plows do an awful lot of damage to items, to curbing such as burn. That's why we generally require vertical granite curbing, because it's permanent and perpetual. With that, I'll turn it over to the rest of the board to make any comments that they have.
Okay, so about the curbing, you'd like granite at the entrances?
Well, that's at a bare minimum. We're looking at the rest, certainly in the curves.
Good.
And where necessary, wheel stops. I can't recall whether there's, the parking is parallel to the building and not perpendicular to the front, as I recall. So wheel stops may not be necessary there, but any place where they're likely to hit a structure or go beyond the property line, there should be wheel stops and/or granite curbing.
Mr. Chairman, there are some spaces that are perpendicular to the building, but I believe there are ballards along that building face.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Horstfeld. Those who said it's... I turn it over to members of the board for comments.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is an answer, Caber. Can someone from the owners satisfy my curiosity in terms of giving me a few sentences, a history and overview history of the property?
Sure. For, as far as I know, currently, the property is the kids' sports facility, which is, I believe, a daycare during the daytime hours, and then kids' activity venue, I guess, during nights and weekends. I don't know if there's anything more that somebody from the team could share?
Mr. Caber, the only thing I'll add to that, this is strictly from my knowledge, and anybody with the project is free to contradict me. I believe it was a fitness center in a previous life.
I believe the property owner, David Greenblatt, is in the group here. He would be the one who knows the most about the history. I'm afraid I know no more than has been said so far.
So what happened with the previous occupants? Are they being displaced because of this new development, or what is the trend in here?
Mr. Caber, I did work on this building many years ago. The present owner has owned this building for, I'm thinking, five years, somewhere in that vicinity, maybe a little bit longer. And he's one kids' sports side of it. He's a longtime town business person. This is his third location in town, and he does a lot with the schools. So this is not a new venture, this building in this area is not a new venture for him. He has been here and been there for a long time. This project is just accessory use to the property that they're adding in, solar panels over his existing parking lot.
Fine. Anything else, Mr. Caber?
No, Dan has answered my question, because I was running into the economic impact analysis, because I couldn't see any in the package, so I was trying to figure out how can I get to that. But you have answered my question.
Anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised among the panelists and the board. With that, I'm going to open it up. Anybody in the public that wants to comment on this application? Hearing none. Mr. Charbonneau? When do you think we should dock at this for the next hearing?
Well, considering the comments that came out tonight, you know, we obviously tried to make sure we don't pile too many public hearings into one night. So on the 25th, we have three public hearings already scheduled. So I would say, given the amount of information that's been passed along tonight, it would be very difficult, I think, for the applicant to get all the information and all the revisions done within the next week to get it a week ahead of time for the 25th. So if it pleases the board, I would recommend a continuation to April 8th, and that will give the applicant, you know, three weeks to get everything together and to my office a week before the next public hearing. I think that would be fair. I think it's going to be tough to turn this all around in less than a week.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing until April 8th at 7 o'clock. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I still move.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Roll call vote. Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Mr. Caber?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We'll see you on the 8th at 7 o'clock. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Thanks, have a good night.
Take a minute before we open the next hearing. Allow one group to leave and another group to join us. Looks like, I don't see Mr. Crimmens. There he is. Okay. I wasn't going to start without him. With that, I'm going to entertain a motion to open up the petition of ESC Schuman 200 LLC. Can I have a second? Thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Mr. Caber?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Will the applicant and/or his representative please come forward and identify yourself for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Barry O. Crimmens of 909...
Well, I'm sorry, Barry. Joe, you need to read the public, the legal ad.
I am sorry.
Sorry, Barry. So let me pull that up, Joe.
I thought it was a little early.
I thought it was a little early for me to come in.
Always anxious.
Couldn't wait to hear from Barry.
Yes, let me just you don't have to call it up. I've got that one in. Okay.
Okay, okay, great, Joe. Thanks.
A public hearing will be held upon by remote participation on Thursday, March 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. On the petition of the applicant, TSC Schuman 200 LLC, 175 Paramount Drive, Rena, Mass. 02767 and the owners, TSC Schuman 200 LLC, 175 Paramount Drive, Rena, Mass. 02767 and Jeffrey Crane, 2670 South Banning Street. Gilbert, Arizona, 85295, represented by Attorney Barry R. Crimmins. 909 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. For waivers by special permit under section 6.1.9. Special permit to allow waivers from section 6.1.6. Table of off-screen parking requirements and section 6.1.7 Parking and Loading Space Standards. And in addition for site plan approval under section 10.6 Site Plan Approval of the Stoughton zoning bylaws for construction of an 81,000 square foot addition to the existing manufacturing warehouse level for the property located at 200 Schuman Avenue. Further identified in assessors plan number 88, Lot 142, Map 89, Lot 142. And located in the industrial I and residential B, RB zoning district. To participate, call phone number 1617-675-4444 and enter PIN 7410560584336 hashtag. Participate via Google Hangouts. Please follow this link, meet.google.com/ tuf-bnqj-v8o. This link can be copied and pasted into your web browser. In the event that these measures are unsuccessful or inconvenient. A recording of these measures, these this meeting transcript or the comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and or on Stoughton Media Access Corporation website as soon as possible after the meeting. The site plans can be viewed at the Office of the Stoughton Planning Board, second floor Engineering Department, Town Hall, Port Pearl Street. Stoughton, Mass. During normal business hours by appointment only in accordance with the town manager's policy. Petitioner and/or his representative or any other persons desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Town of Stoughton Planning Board, Joseph O'Scardino, Chairperson, published in the journal Sun, issues of February 24th, 2021, and March 3rd, 2021. Now, Mr. Crimmins.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr.?
Yes, there's a pointed disclosure. I have a previous relationship with the owner of the property. He is a subcontractor with previous jobs for me. We are not presently doing any work, but I just wanted to let that know.
Mr. Crimmins, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry R. Crimmins of 909 Washington Street in Stoughton. Here on behalf of the applicant for this project, which is the owner, TS Schuman 200 LLC. This is an application for site plan approval for a proposed addition to their building located at 200 Schuman Avenue. Schuman, this property is located at the far end of Schuman Avenue. Schuman Avenue is located off of Campanelli Parkway in the Campanelli Industrial Park, which is located off of Turnpike Street. The application also requests a special permit for certain waivers from the parking regulations of the zoning bylaw. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just introduce the members of the project team who are going to be speaking to the board tonight. And in addition to the property owner, we'll also hear from the tenant, which is Globe Composite Solutions LLC, and they are represented here tonight by Mr. Joseph McCadden, who is the president of Globe. We also have our project engineer, Mr. Dennis Dennis Swat of DJSA Architecture. Along with our project engineer, Mr. Michael Fabiano of High Point Engineering. Michael would do the the bulk of the presentation tonight, including the slide presentation that John has shared with the board. And finally, I am the attorney of record for the project. I would at this time, Mr. Chairman, if I may, introduce Mr. Joseph McCadden from Globe. So that Joe could give a brief overview of what Globe is looking to do here and why they're looking to do it. So if I may, call upon Joe.
Thank you, Barry.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Joe. Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. John Charvano advanced the slide, two slides, please. Thank you. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members, for having us here this evening. Globe Solutions is currently outgrowing its space. We have a currently have a space in Avon of roughly 30,000 square feet that is nearly full. The future operations are driving us and it's driven primarily by a contract with the United States Navy. The United States Navy being an electric boat, General Dynamics Electric Boat. Being the major customer for these products. We do have contract deadlines and obligations to meet with that. And we are trying to do the right thing here through this process and ensure that we remain a good corporate system. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the the bulk of our presentation tonight will have to do with the proposed addition as it relates to the site plan approval application. Time permitting, I can address the issue of the requested special permit for the for the waivers that we are requesting relative to parking. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call upon Mr. Fabiano to make a presentation to the board.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. John, can you advance to the next slide, please? For the record, my name is Mike Fabiano with High Point Engineering. With the record civil engineers, the project, I have a few slides presented, and then I'm going to change it over to to Dennis, who's the project architect. This first slide is specific to the locus as Mr. Crimmins. Attorney Crimmins noted, this is in the back of the Campanelli Industrial Park, about 4,000 feet off of Turnpike Street. 200 Schuman is the last building in the park. Circled in yellow is the general location for that. And it's bounded by a large national grid's electric easement. There's a residential neighborhood to the west Corbett Road. And then to the to the north is a large wooded area. To the east is a large wooded area and then eventually over to to Central Street and Route 24, as you can see on the plan. And then the all the buildings leading up to that are industrial buildings located within the industrial park located to the south. Next slide, please. So this is an existing additions rendering for the project kind of zooms in directly on the 200 Schuman site. The blue outline that you see is the property owned in fee, which is approximately just under 19 acres in size. That's a main part of the project as well as the area outlined in orange, which extends a little further off the page. Which is basically around seven acres or so, not all of which is going to be disturbed, but is under a ground lease agreement with a within a butter. This is squarely located in the industrial zone. However, a portion of the project not being disturbed, but located on a locus. There's a roughly a 50 to 60 foot band that's located in the residential suburban districts located on the left-hand side of the plan here. The site is is bounded by a few different wetland systems that you can see in green. The existing building that you see in the left-hand side is the Globe operation, kind of the fifth percent side of the left is Globe Composite Solutions. The right-hand side is a tenant called Mancon. This the existing building is just around 157, 158,000 square feet. And as you can see, there's a large parking fields to the south of the building. The large white building that you see below the project with the solar panels is 139 Schuman. And to the left of that building, you can see the long driveway that leads up from the public right away. You can see the cul-de-sac at the bottom of the plan, which is Schuman Avenue. Next slide, please, John. I just wanted to put a quick slide together about how many things we've done up to this point. The project more or less got kicked off in September of 2020. Then in October, proponent met with the town. It was successful in getting a TIF approval. Then in January, we started the initial site plan review process. Then we had a formal pre-application meeting with engineering. We've conducted a site walk on site with with engineering conservation as well as a meeting with the zoning department, Mr. Charvano, and the and the the building department. We've met with the fire department to kick the project off. And then last week, we met with the zoning Board of Appeals and were successful in being granted a bearings for a small part of the project. And also last week on Thursday, we had our first kickoff meeting with the Constancy Commission, which went went very well. Next slide, please. So the overall premise of the project, I kind of wanted to talk about a few major components listed in letters. The the first point, letter A, is about the building expansion. The the main building expansion is roughly around 80,100 square feet that you see in the large massing. There is also a separate piece of the expansion, which is a loading dock arrangement that's in the rear of the project. You know, in the rear loading dock area, which is around 1,200 square feet. So the overall total building square footage is 81,300 square feet. Point number B is a major component, which was a change to the loading dock arrangement. There are seven bays located in the loading dock. There are roughly going to be about 15 to 20 truck trips per week as part of this project. There's really, there's actually not going to be too much of a change for truck traffic because what's going to happen is that the 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 loading and unloading operation that happens between the two facilities of Stoughton and Avon, when Avon stops and this project commences, the the truck traffic will stop from Avon and will only be going to this facility. Globe estimates the the truck trips to be around 15 to 20 trucks per week. And that's inclusive of just box trucks deliveries compared to the, you know, the main deliveries going to the Navy for their for their products. Besides the seven loading dock doors, there's a there's a rigging door that you see, that long skinny strip just above the the American flag is a door at grade that will be used occasionally a few times a year. If that, there's additional landscaping that we provide in this area to further screen to the residential abutters to the to the west. There's an Aburbiro that's immediately adjacent to the to the loading dock area. We've added a large landscape island to put the flag prominently, which is part of the some of the defense contractor requirements. As well as, you know, breaking up the pavement and providing as much impervious as we can around the project. Point number C that you see to the right is about the main parking fields. We've done some substantial modifications to the to the park arrangement. The next slide you'll see in a minute shows kind of a before and after comparison, but in in the main parking fields, major improvements, we significantly reduced the amount of pavement in the area. We've increased the landscaping from the overall landscaping as part of the main parking field from a 1% criteria to a 16% criteria, which was pretty significant. We've added some low impact design BMPs for water quality. We've added site lighting to that area, which currently does not exist. The whole site is currently lit by by wall packs. There's some challenges with illegal dumping that's been happening sporadically throughout the years and and site lighting as part of the employee benefit for employees being in a more safe condition as well as you know, providing better visibility and forwarding illegal dumping, we thought was a was a good idea. The site lighting was added and we also took some comments from engineering, part of their review letter and heard this earlier in your your previous review. The the proposal that was submitted originally had, you know, Batumis berm being submitted as part of the proposal, but we've since modified that design and have added vertical granite curbing to all the interior landscape islands that you see, as well as the large landscape island that is where the American flag is. And we've modified the Batumis berm to Cape Cod berm in other areas. And where berm was pre-existing and in and in good shape, we left that alone if it was not being disturbed as part of this project. So there is a upgrade to curbing as part of the review process. Point number D to the right of the project that you see is the rear access drive that removes that brings trucks around the back of the property. That loading arrangement you see from Mancon has remained the same. We've removed pavement in that area to increase impervious. We've kept the bio retention area. That was part of a previous proposal in place. We've added new LID BMPs as part of the improvement package. Where you see that truck right above the the point number D, that green area to the right, which is directly adjacent to the to the wet ones. That's a significant improvement for water quality in that area. Then point number D to the rear is the, I'm sorry, F or E, I'm sorry, is rear truck core. The the compactor and the the debris or the the construction debris container is now screened from all points that are visible from the from the residential neighborhood as well from the public. We have a a container that's a 30 or so yard container that's tucked into the corner of the building as well as a compactor that is directly adjacent to the building. 100% screened from the public and from the and from the abutting residential neighborhood. The that area in the back is also serving a use that currently, I think, we've heard some comments about trailers being stored in the front. There are some empty cabs that are being currently stored in the existing parking lot. Part of the proposal is to remove all trailers from any part of the front of the project. And now there's 14 trailer storage bays being located in that rear truck core area that you see on the on the north side of the of the of the paved area. So removing trailers from the front to the back was mitigation and improvement. And we've we've made significant strides based on some comments from the engineering department regarding water quality and stormwater. Originally, the the project had previously proposed 100% subsurface recharge or subsurface detention in that rear truck core area to control all the roof area that you see in the in the back rear truck core area. And we've since made modifications to do an open air recharge basin as well as a detention basin. And split the the stormwater up and those plans are being currently revised and will be resubmitted shortly for formal review. One of the last points is two points, speaking about abutters and 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 concerns about mitigation for abutting residential viewpoints. We've gone to some pretty significant lengths. One major thing was reducing this project to not have any 360 degree circulation around the building. The original proposal that we had with Globe was to promote truck traffic around the building. We've since removed 100% of that. It's one of the reasons why we met with the fire department very early on the project to seek their approval, to have this be a three-sided building. So there is no truck traffic to the west side of the building between the building and the residential abutters. That entire west side of the building is more or less a inactive dead side of the building. There are no windows in that side of the building. There are only two wall packs purely for life safety. There are arrangements for the electrical loading to bring that lighting down even further off hours. It's remote, very low lighting levels. The lighting levels are cut off at the abutting property and actually well before that to zero. We've we've kept the the color of that building to be an earth tone brown so that any view quarters coming through the the woods and through the natural street stand buffer that we that's remaining for the project will just see a brown side of a building and and nothing else. Further, the the loading dock arrangement currently directs directly points towards the residential neighborhood. So from a noise mitigation, having the the truck core be pointed to the south and away from the residential abutters will further, you know, mitigate the existing condition for the for the proposed condition. The the last point I wanted to talk about was point G down to the left of the of the main driveway. One of the major improvements for this project is the the removal of septic from the projects. Currently, the entire building existing addition is a septic system disposal area. This project was originally built back in the mid 80s. And there originally, there was an industrial user there that had a process water blowdown condition where the septic system. where the septic system was significantly sized. Um, this operation, both existing and future, uh, is significantly less than that. Um, during construction, the septic system will be used. However, through conversations with engineering, uh, we believe that the, the town sewer improver project, um, that's proposed is, um, is pegged to come online roughly around the same time that this project is scheduled to be completed in the year twenty twenty-two. Um, and this project proposes to one hundred percent remove the septic system from operation and directly connect to the sewer. Next slide, please, John. This slide is, uh, is basically a slide that shows kind of a before and after viewpoint with the main parking field showing, um, the difference between what the existing condition, the existing condition is on the top of the plan and what the proposed condition is on the bottom of the plans. Um, we had a, in the, in the full application package, there's fifty-eight or so plans as part of the large role that you all received. Uh, one of the plans was a landscaping plan that showed landscape materials. Uh, our, our landscape designer and senior planner, uh, went through the site and, uh, there's a bunch of mixed materials. As you can see, the, the existing dis, the existing addition has almost no landscaping, um, sprinkled throughout. Um, we took, um, you know, we took the time to add appropriate landscaping, uh, to the project to make the, uh, the entry more appropriate, uh, adding landscaping in for screening around the loading dock, adding significant landscaping and shade trees within the interior landscape islands that do not exist in the existing condition today. Uh, and then throughout the site where we can, uh, removing a traditional maintained lawn and putting in a, uh, a showy wildflower conservation seed mix, uh, specifically down in the septic system, the septic system area as well as, uh, areas that were located in existing buffer zones to wetlands. Uh, the last item on this plan in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see a, uh, what looks to be a bio retention or it's a, uh, what's called a focal point bio retention area. Um, that is a, a man-made, uh, water quality basin that's being implemented to improve water quality as part of that loading dock arrangement to, uh, offset water quality impacts to the, to the wetland system. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Dennis with DJAS Architects and we'll go over some of the architecture on the next slide.
Well, we're really, we just have to say, gentlemen, we've, we have a, uh, a schedule here to adhere to. And we're, we're about, um, the board has questions. Uh, we haven't heard from the professional staff and we've had forty-five minutes allocated to the whole hearing. And we're a little flexible on that, but, um, I know Mr. Charbonneau indicated that this presentation had to be, uh, the slide presentation had to be ten minutes. It's gone twenty-three, so we've been kind of indulgent with respect to the size and impact of this project, both for you and the town. But, um, we really appreciate you wrapping this up.
Apologize, Mr. Chairman. Um, Dennis, why don't you speak just quickly to the architecture and then, uh, Jamie for the schedule and we wrapped up in a few minutes.
Will do. Hi, my name's Dennis Swart. Good evening, everyone. So quickly through this plan, on the west side of the building, we have an eighty thousand square foot addition. The majority of the plan in the addition will be warehouse space. There will be some, um, slight expansion of their existing manufacturing operations on the north side of this plan. As Mike mentioned, there are seven south-facing loading docks that face directly down Schuman Ave. On the southeast side of this, you can see in this plan, there is a small multipurpose meeting room and new bathrooms that will be part of this new addition. On the north side of the building, we have a twelve hundred square foot loading dock. And that will be used for loading operations during construction as the existing loading docks will be deleted. And then after construction, that existing loading dock, that new north building will be converted to compactor and dumpster, uh, locations as Mike explained earlier. Uh, if you could switch, switch to the next slide, the elevations, please. So we, we have, we have used insulated metal panel on this structure and the color will be brown to match what's there. Um, and our intent is to carry that through as much as possible to make this building recede as Mike had mentioned earlier in his presentation. Um, the building height is thirty-nine feet high, thirty-nine feet six inches from average grade. So it's, it's under the, the zoning height. Um, the structure is going to be a steel frame structure, again clad in insulated metal panel. And if you could slide to the next slide, please. Uh, the next one for the renderings, actually. So quickly on these renderings, this rendering in the top left corner is the south-facing loading docks looking right down Schuman Ave. The rendering on the right in the middle, that is a rendering of the north side addition, the twelve hundred square foot addition. And then in the bottom left, that is a photo of the existing conditions of what's there today. Uh, so in terms of color, we're going to try to match and, and continue that all throughout our new addition. And finally, if you can notice, we've tried to work with the engineers to locate the rooftop units on this structure so they're away from the roof edge and out of view from any abutters or any adjacent property owners. That's my two-minute presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, hi, my name's Jamie Sifalilo. Uh, thank you, board, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll try to be real quick. Uh, I'm one of the founding members of, uh, the Sheer Water Companies. We are the parent of TSC Schuman. Uh, we acquired this property, uh, August two thousand seventeen, about four years ago. And I gotta say, over those years, it's been fascinating to witness Globe's explosive growth. Uh, but more importantly, uh, the increased contributions they've made to our national security. It's, it's just been something awesome to watch. Uh, but their growth has been so dynamic that this expansion isn't just a priority anymore. Uh, it's an absolute necessity. Um, and in order to meet their, their commitments to the Department of Defense, we had to really commit to an aggressive schedule, as you can see here. Um, we need this project to begin in spring two thousand one. Um, and we expect to deliver temp CO, um, in January of, uh, next year. Uh, and that, that, uh, gives us the ability to hand the building over to Globe Composite where they can do all their, their interior fit-ups. So, uh, just in closing, we, we've made a tremendous, uh, investment in this project. And with some help from the town and, uh, some good fortune, we'll be able to keep an important taxpayer, uh, an important employer and an important, uh, charitable company right here in Stoughton. And thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, that completes our, uh, primary presentation to the board, uh, so turn it back to you at this time. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Horstfeld?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and thank you to the, uh, the team, uh, presenting the project. I think you did a good job, uh, summarizing this, this project. The engineering department did review the set of plans, um, and, and issued a, a technical review letter. Um, it, it was, I think, probably about five pages long with a, a lot of, um, you know, drafting comments, uh, minor, uh, minor comments. I think, uh, and we've discussed that with the, uh, the project engineer, Mr. Fabiano. Uh, and, and we don't think that he'll have, uh, much, uh, issue with addressing the majority of those comments contained within that letter, uh, uh, relatively simply. Uh, Mr. Fabiano mentioned that, uh, one of the biggest, uh, concerns that we had was the location of the subsurface detention basin, uh, which is at the rear of the property. Um, and will be located, uh, below grade and, and within the water table. We had some concerns with the design of that system and discussed, uh, different ways to, uh, to provide, uh, alternatives to that. And, uh, I know that, uh, High Point is, is looking at, um, some, a combination of subsurface and surface basins, uh, to handle, uh, stormwater runoff generated from the site. Uh, he, he mentioned his, in his, uh, presentation that they've already addressed some of those comments, uh, but we have not received those, uh, updated design plans and look forward to, uh, getting those in our office so that we can, uh, see those changes incorporated. Uh, one of the key components, as you know, is that, uh, the, the site is existing on a septic system, uh, which was located, uh, on the west side of the access drive. That in the future will be, uh, abandoned and, uh, the, the project will be connected to the, uh, newly expanded, uh, Park Street Sewer, uh, which is intended to, uh, end at the cul-de-sac in Schuman Drive. And, and hopefully will be online somewhere around the time that, uh, this project is, is ready for occupancy. Uh, so the, uh, we look forward to, to having that connection. Uh, the access drive off of Schuman, uh, Schuman Ave, uh, is a little bit in, uh, uh, disarray at this point in time. The, uh, uh, we discussed with, uh, Mr. Fabiano, uh, the possibility of, of having that area, uh, milled and overlaid and that pavement repaired, uh, as a part of this project. And I believe that they've agreed to do so. Uh, we look forward to seeing that on the updated plans. Uh, another suggestion, uh, for, uh, you know, landscaping, uh, amenities might be added uh, along that, uh, that pathway as you leave, as you leave the public roadway and, and approach the, uh, the existing building. Um, the, the applicant has requested a waiver for in reduction to parking. Um, and it should be noted that, uh, they've shown an area for banked parking spaces, um, behind the building. Uh, and, uh, we've asked, uh, for an updated plan to show the exact layout of that to just be sure that they could all fit there and could be potentially built if the, if the need ever arose in the future. Uh, and High Point has agreed to, to do that. Um, I'd like to commend them with their stormwater management, uh, even though we do have some changes. Uh, they are looking to add some, uh, low-impact development features, the focal point, uh, unit, uh, which will be, uh, adjacent to that existing drainage swale on the southern side of the building. Uh, and the removal of, of a lot of, uh, in, of pervious area and replacement with impervious, I'm sorry, removal of impervious and placement with, uh, pervious, uh, area and landscaping. So we believe that's a, a good amenity for the project. And I also want to note that, uh, a lot of the work in the front of the building where the new loading bays are proposed, uh, is within, uh, buffer zones to the existing, uh, wetland resource area. I know that they've gone before the Conservation Commission for an initial, uh, meeting, but it should be noted, uh, that that, uh, is subject to review by the Conservation Commission. Uh, and, uh, the decision will be forthcoming. And I think that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Horstfeld. Uh, Mr. Charbonneau?
Thank you, Joe. Um, I know that I, I'd like to thank the applicant because I know they've been working, um, with the engineering department on the comments that they, uh, they have provided to them. And I had asked the applicant to hold off on submitting any revised plans prior to this meeting not to, so as not to, um, confuse the board so, you know, we could review the project that was submitted and then implement the changes after this meeting. So I thank them for that. So I know they've dressed, they've addressed a lot of the engineering comments already and they addressed probably, you know, pretty much all of my comments already. So, um, you know, I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm, you know, my comments are basically content-related. Uh, there's nothing really huge here, just that, um, you know, they need to add the snow storage areas onto the plan and meet the, you know, meet the regulations for handicap signage. And, um, so that's about it. And, um, just, you know, waiting for, you know, gonna get a zoning review letter from the building commissioner. Um, sometime very soon, I emailed them about that today. But that's basically the extent of my comments on the project. There really wasn't much, um, they were very minor content comments for the most part. So, um, I think, I think the plans are, uh, are in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. The next phase of this, by the way, if there's any member of the public that's, um, here to talk about this project, they'll be allowed to speak after the planning board is finished with its comments. With that, I'll begin the comments as typical of our process. Um, and I also want to thank the, um, the applicant for the, um, presentation, the quality of the presentation. Um, my only comment in the plans, and I don't think it's, um, is that the, all the beautiful color we saw today was not reflected in the plans that I received. So I have no idea that you've, you've submitted colored plans. And I have no way to judge the quality of the landscaping except by the visual that you provided us this evening. So I'm awaiting the plans with all of that nice color, uh, from your landscaping. So I will address some of the landscaping comments, but I'll reserve a lion's share of them for a future meeting. Um, I want to ask, um, first of all, what happens? Uh, I heard about a very aggressive time schedule. Uh, I want to ask the question of what happens if the sewer is not completed, uh, in accordance with your schedule? What are you going to do with this project?
How are you? Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question. Uh, so the, um, the, the existing facility currently discharges to the septic system today. Um, that septic system has, uh, ample capacity to continue to service the building today and in the future. Uh, so that if the sewer project were to be, uh, delayed by any stretch of time, um, the, the capacity at which the, uh, the, the current facility discharges to that septic system is, uh, in the, in magnitude of, it's basically around two thousand or twenty-five hundred gallons a day for title five regulations of what the existing facility does. The existing system has capacity up to nine thousand gallons per day. So working with engineering, we believe that A, that the current facility needs to stay in line to the septic system during construction. And then, uh, the expectation is that the sewer will be complete at, around the time that the, um, that the, uh, the applicant is going to be done with tenant, tenant fit up. If the sewer project in Schuman gets delayed, um, there is absolutely no issue at all with the current septic system to continue to, um, uh, to allow discharge to happen for any stretch of time up until the point when the sewer gets turned on and we can take the septic system offline. So the, the system today is well oversized to accommodate any flows that are coming from Globe and Mancon with the existing facility.
So in other words, you're, you're, this, this, this project did not come forward because you're relying solely on the production, the construction of the, of the sewer.
Correct. Not, we're, we're not relying upon the, uh, construction of the sewer.
Thank you very much. Those are very important comments. Um, you mentioned the, uh, the dumping. I've been out the site at least twice with, um, the planner. And I did notice, uh, not only dumping, but I also noticed a bunch of what appears to be electric transformers marked danger uh, on the, uh, side nearest the wetlands. Um, is there any plans to continue to do any storage of materials outside the premises?
There are not. I can, uh, uh, Jamie can answer that question maybe in more detail, but a few things. A, uh, as part of our application, um, as far as debris or man-made garbage or dumping that's in the woods, all that is proposed on the plans to be removed by hand carefully. Uh, then further than that, we have, uh, currently even without the proposal, we have, uh, comments into the tenant, um, that the, that the owner has, um, demanded that all that material that's, uh, currently be stored be removed from the buffer zones. Uh, and then as part of the final proposal for what you have before you, there is no plans for outdoor storage, uh, in that area and that material is, uh, is not going to be stored outside.
In order to deserve as a deterrent after you do the, uh, excellent cleaning job that you're implying you're going to do, which I believe you're going to do, uh, because you're spending all this money on the premises. I, we, uh, in situations like this usually require the installation of cameras and a coordination with the police department. And the reason for that is it helps to enforce the no dumping. So while you're doing additional lighting, you can mount some, some, uh, cameras on the side of that building in order to, um, monitor that situation. Jamie, is that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Jamie Sifalilo once again, uh, with the ownership group. And, um, the Globe Composite, um, there, the product that they manufacture is extremely high security levels. Um, and they will be, uh, implementing a security system around the building that, um, that we could all dream about. So, um,
Well, I'm interested in what goes on outside the building, not what's going on inside the building. And that's where the security, uh,
Yes, no, that, that's why the building was designed without windows and, and there will be security cameras out, outside as well.
Okay, glad to hear that. Um, the HVAC units were mentioned in the presentation. The, the, the planning board rules are HVAC units that are be screened, um, in accordance with the planning board so they cannot be seen, period. So you're gonna need to put a, um, an apron around that to cover up the HVAC units. The only way that, um, the only area that we, we're not, uh, asking to cover is if we're looking at a drone from the sky. So in other words, on all four corners that we approach that building, we don't want to see any HVAC units. to see any HVAC units, nothing that's mounted on the roof. And I can show you dozens of projects in the town of Stoughton that fast food restaurants, apartment buildings, all screened. Our new high school, $130 million high school, HVAC units are all camouflaged. So I want you to duly note that. You mentioned in your presentation about placing the docks in front of the building in order to mitigate noise. Now, I'll tell you, at night, noise travels pretty far, and there is, you are on a butter to a neighborhood district. So I would certainly at the very least require that you do not run diesel vehicles, and we'll talk about the timing, that cannot run certainly in the evening. There can be no idling of diesel tractor trailers or any other diesel vehicles. That will reverberate, believe me, in that neighborhood. Which brings me to, you mentioned that the building was 39 feet tall, the addition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Not that an $81,000, $81,000 square foot building was anything less than massive, but frankly, you're talking about arborvities, unless they're 40 feet tall, you're gonna see that building. And so what we typically require is PVC fencing that completely surrounds the residential areas, because you're not, the only other alternative that we've allowed is dressing up the building such that it's aesthetically pleasing from the outside, and considering the width of that building, that's, that's not a, I don't see that being in the cards to re-architecturally design that building to be aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. So given the fact that it is a warehouse, we're gonna want it screened from the abutting neighborhoods, which, now I've been out to that site, and I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Charbonneau and I went all the way out to the change in elevation that's behind the existing warehouse, and we can see those houses very easily. Now, we obviously couldn't get into those houses, but they're very, we were, we could see them sitting in our cars, and the addition was gonna be much further than we were in an automobile closer to that neighborhood. In addition, I, we'd like to see some more landscaping at the very beginning of your premises. It's a very expensive and expensive premises. I would, certainly if I were the building owner, would wanna dress it up with some colorful plantings, some nice ground-mounted signs, enhancing the property as you come into it. I think Mr. Horstel has talked about the road that comes off, the condition of the road that comes off to cul-de-sac is all broken up, and I think the engineering department is handling that particular aspect of the project. You're gonna have to remove any trees on that side facing the abutters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And Mike, before, Mr. Chairman, can we go back to your prior comment on that? And I don't know, John, is it possible for you to bring up Slide 7, so we can show that area? While he's doing that, Mr. Chairman, on that side, there's an existing tree line that faces the abutters, not to mention the trees that are behind their properties. There are, there are three homes that are abutters to that west side, but all of whom will be screened by, yeah, that's the one. Thank you, John. So you see the one marked, marked F?
Yeah, and I've been, I'll let you finish, I'm sorry.
Well, so that existing tree line, as you notice, curves right around the proposed addition and is going to block that addition from those three homes.
It doesn't.
Sorry?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I mean, I thought you were.
So, I was gonna say, above our property line, which is shown in blue there, that wooded area that's owned by Mr. Crane, that's actually the area for the proposed solar panel farm. So that's beyond our property. So if you notice, there are, there are only those three homes. What's immediately between them and us is the national grid easement that's 150 feet wide, and then you have that tree line adjacent to the proposed addition. So that existing tree line is gonna screen the addition from those three homes.
Mr. Crimmins, with all due respect, Mr. Charbonneau, we're both out there, and at this time of the year, it's very, it's the perfect point of time to look at those. We had no problem standing there, looking right at those houses. It's, I didn't have to go.
You were probably, you were probably standing up in the easement area, because if you were down at grade, you, I was just out there yesterday to check on a couple of things myself. You don't see those homes if you're down at grade where the building is located. You'd have to go up to the easement area.
Attorney, Attorney Crimmins, if I may, the, Mike Fabiano from High Point, I totally recognize that there is a view corridor during winter conditions. If you're in one of the homes, the three homes that are on Corbett Road, looking through the easement, you know, there's not a significant stand of evergreens, there are a lot of deciduous trees, but we made a significant effort to reduce lighting, reduce colors, create earth tones, reduce activity on that side of the building. So while you are seeing a building, you're seeing a browned, quiet building compared to any activity that's going on there. The arborvitie row was specific to the loading dock area only and not for the building. There is no room within the site for fencing, and that would do anything of any significance. If there was fencing, it would be screening that would be happy to propose on the private property for the residents that exist on Corbett, and it would only be, you know, the view corridor that you'd block would be, you know, eight foot down compared to, you know, a second story or a first story. So we thought we, we did quite a bit of work to mitigate view corridors activity, mitigate for noise, mitigate for light pollution and color, although the building still, that one side you see by F is approximately 175 feet from the back of the property line, not from the homes. So I recognize that there's definitely a view corridor there, but we did take strides to specifically look at that area and try to mitigate for abutted disruption.
And by the way, I'm recognizing that, I'm not necessarily dismissing it out of hand, but I'm saying that that's something that, that no one contemplated a structure of that magnitude, and we're trying to, the planning board does a balancing act. You've talked about two out of three of those balances, to some extent the third one that I'm discussing now. That is the applicant, the abutters, and the town. And the owner of the property's talked about the town and the national, national interests in this project, but there's also the abutters who put their whole life savings into those properties, and frankly, it's the job of the planning board to balance all three of those. And considering the dollar value of this whole project, considering doing something right at the property line for those residents is not, not a terrible economic burden with respect to this. Now, I appreciate the arborvities, and when I get color renderings, I'm gonna look at the height of those arborvities to see the extent of which they actually camouflage the loading docks that are facing that way, but for this discussion, I want to talk about what happens at the end of the edge of that with respect to those three houses on Corbett Avenue. So I have been out there with the planner, it's possible that I was standing in the easement, so therefore maybe perhaps a site visit where with some stakes, we can see whether we were beyond the property line in our observation or not, but I'm still saying that I saw those houses from the area that I thought spacing off 81,000 square feet was visible to those neighbors. And we can't completely, we're not asking to completely camouflage a 39 and 1/2 foot tall building, but you have to appreciate, there's nothing there now but wildlife, green trees, some trees, not a, the kind of buffer you were trying to.
And Joe, could I just piggyback on your comment to Joe's point? In addition, you know, putting on a substantial addition to the building, even though it's obviously a large building already, you're putting on quite a large addition, so the activity of the building is gonna be that much more, and the level of activity and the noise and everything is going to be, it's going to be increasing quite a bit. So like Joe said, absolutely, if you guys want to meet us out on the site at some point, you know, next week, I'd certainly be willing to do that, and we could take a look at that to see if something would be reasonable.
Okay. Yep, we can follow up with you on that, John. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, I want to go back to my tree removal. Are you gonna have to remove any trees to construct this?
We are, yes.
Okay, I think I want to, I have an idea in terms of square footage, how many square feet of trees are being removed from the premises.
Mr. Chairman, we've added, we've added to the site plans based on the engineering review comment letter, area takeoffs for tree removal, so that's been being added to the plan.
It's not the planning board.
Okay.
Remember, we're looking at the third piece of that triumvirate.
So you're looking for the square footage of tree removal? Is that the question?
Yeah, I'm not gonna ask you to count the trees, Mr. Crimmins.
That's good. I'm not too good at counting.
Mike, yeah, if you could just calculate the square footage of the trees that are being removed, that would be good. It's already been added to the plans based on the review letter, correct? Oh, great. All right, so we'll see that in the revised plans. That's correct. Okay, thank you.
I think that that's, that's a completion of my comments. I noticed we're close to nine o'clock, but I don't want to, I don't want to steal any more time from members of my board that may want to ask questions. I don't see any hands raised, but that's fine. Anybody can chime in that has any questions, Mr. Kelly or et cetera, that may have some questions.
No, I think my thought process of review on the drawings, they've done a fairly well job overall on the project. I think it's a good project overall for the town. I don't see any major issues. I mean, the abutters issue is probably the biggest thing that I do see, and mainly, and unfortunately, they get hurt because of the easement that exists there with the overhead wires, and that area is already clear, because I don't think they'd be coming up as close to where they are if that didn't exist. So unfortunately, that's just the configuration of their site and the configuration what they do, which is, you know, just unfortunate with the way it is. So other than that, I really don't have any comments on the project at all. I think you touched base on a lot of the points, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Mr. Demuse, and then Mr. Cobb.
Those three houses that we're discussing, aren't they higher, the ground level higher in elevation than, say, the parking lot elevation of this development?
Well, I'm not an engineer, so I won't answer that question.
Mike, do you know the difference between the elevation on Corbett Road versus at our site?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact elevation, but yes, they are, they are slightly higher in elevation than the, than the parking lot, but the easement area is more or less coincident with the, you know, with the backyards of the residents, and then as you move through the easement, as you approach the building, the elevation drops a little bit to that gravel band that's adjacent to the building.
The, what I'm trying to get at is, if there was a fence there, the fence really isn't gonna make much difference if they're at a higher elevation anyway.
Mr. Demuse, I wasn't suggesting that they do a 39 and 1/2 foot fence.
No, no, I wasn't either, but the point I'm trying to make is if they're already at a higher elevation, that, you know, a six or an eight foot fence isn't gonna make much of a difference.
I think, Paul, when we're out there, if memory serves, I think once you get on top of that hill, it's fairly level to the houses, so I don't think the houses are, are very much above the elevation once you get to the, once you get to the top of that little hill. So if they were to put some kind of hesitation, I think that would provide screening for the homes. I don't think, I don't think they're, if they're, if they're higher, it's very slight. It's, it seems pretty level once you get up to the top of that hill.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of chime in on that. I'm looking at the GIS, for the town's GIS, and the, it's like 134 Corbett Road, the elevation there is around 239, and the elevation at the existing loading dock is about 238, so they're really just about at the same grade.
Right there, yeah.
Okay, you know, because I've driven down there, and it seems like there was much more of a difference than that right along where the high tension wires are. That's, it's deceiving when you're there, yeah.
Yeah, Paul, that does raise up there along the high tension wires, but it's, it looks like it's a bit of a knoll based on the overall topography.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Horstel. That was very important information. Mr. Cobb, I believe you had a question.
Yeah, well, I have a comment regarding the overall presentation. It was very good, and I'm excited. I just have a concern regarding Jamie's and Joe's presentation about them being a good employer and bringing in good benefits to the neighborhood here. I would like them to share those type of economic benefits in numbers in terms of micro benefit, economic benefit, how many people are employed from our community here in Stoughton, and also I would like to see something about the mitigation plan. They did talk about mitigation plan regarding the abutters, but I'm more worried about the manufacturing itself, the type of product that's being manufactured there. I think in Slide 2 or 3, 1, 2, or 3, there was some kind of presentation with a cone. I don't know what it is, whether it was a nuclear head or what type of product is being manufactured inside there, but it's just a concern because of biohazards and a whole lot of other elements. I'm not sure what's in there. I'm not gonna ask them to clarify or suggest anything that's what's in there. It's a top secret, so I'll leave it like that, but I would like to see those things, and I would like to see a mitigation plan regarding what's the product in there.
This is Joe McCadden from Globe Composite, so let me try to address a couple of those questions. I can tell you right now that I'm not exactly sure of the number of people from Stoughton itself, but I can tend to tell you that a number of the employees all do reside in the area, that being Stoughton, Taunton, Rockton, across the South Shore. I myself live, currently live in Franklin, so covering for, it really draws employees from a number of areas. And I will tell you right now that we are currently recruiting for employees, and in the, the numbers that I have seen over the past year, I think that the employees have increased, the net headcount has increased by about 10 people, and we currently have at least five open positions. With respect to the product itself, we make a number of composite products. The, the advantage of those products are that they tend to be lightweight as opposed, relative to other products. They tend to be lightweight, very strong, and absorb noise. So I think you can appreciate the advantage of a product that absorbs noise for a military application where silence is absolutely of top importance.
We'll have Sinestia watch The Hunt for Red October.
And actually, I'd actually suggest that you watch Hunter Killer. Hunter Killer is a Virginia-class sub, and the products that we're supplying will remain on the Virginia-class subs. Those subs will be produced at the level of two boats a year. In addition to the Columbia, to the Virginia class, the Columbia class is due to be released. It's currently, it's appropriated, and the plan is to release 12 boats over the next, I think, 15 years, and essentially, the Virginia class will be built at a level of two boats out into the future, well, well into the next 20 years. Out into the future, um, well, well into the next twenty years. So, and that's all publicly available information. But let me just talk a little bit about another product that has less to do with that. We just. Supplied products to the United States Post Office. It was a fairly big job. We've done twenty of the um, twenty-one postal facilities. And we replaced all metal components with uh, with our products. And really, the benefit is it's lighter weight, so it consumes less energy. And two, uh, we've reduced the noise level in those facilities by fifteen decibels. So really, the major driver uh, for that was the um, employee health and safety issues related to the noise. So the products in all those facilities are far more reliable, fewer breakdowns. Less disruptions, lower energy and a safer environment for the employees. So just, that's just a quick example. And you know what? We'd be happy when you take the site tour. To come on in the lobby. I won't bring you out into the operations area, but. Um, and and you can see a number of the products that we do make.
That'd be great. Thanks, Joe.
Oh, you're very welcome. So I hope that helps.
Yes, uh, it helps a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaba. Anything else from the board? Anybody from the public? Wishing to uh. Participate. Hearing none, uh, Mr. Charbonneau, um. I think that based on the conversations, the fact that we're going to have a meeting, the fact that uh, Mr. uh. Horst will need some time to go over. Uh, some things they need to get back to him. Uh, we have some questions they have answered. Um, I would think that April eighth for the next uh, hearing would be in order. What do you think?
It'll give us a chance to do that site visit next week. So. Yeah, I'd love, I'd love to be able to put them on the twenty-fifth, but it's such a quick turnaround for the information. It would have to be done within the next, basically in a few days. So I I think April eighth is probably better because I think we can get a lot more accomplished and. Hopefully be ready to wrap it up soon thereafter. So that's my anticipation, um, Mr. Chairman, is that. I think I think we're in good shape and I think um, as long as the comments are addressed that that Craig has expressed, I think um. I think we should make a lot of progress between now and the next meeting.
With that, I want to entertain a motion to uh.
Chairman, miss, if if I may, I and and I think we're going to be fine with that, but I'd be remiss if. If I could just ask if there's any member of the team that has any concern with the uh, continuance to April eighth. Because I just, I only asked, Mr. Chairman, because as we mentioned at the beginning, this project is on such a tight timeframe, but uh.
Yes, but the conservation commission is not opined on this yet, so.
No, I understand. I understand. I just want to make sure our team is 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 okay with with that date. And we don't have any conflicts on the team. That's the other issue.
Sure.
Is everybody good?
I don't think there's a uh, Attorney Cremens, Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's a a conflict. Our expectation coming into the meeting today that you were going to. Uh, submit all revised plans and all response to comments um, by either Monday or Tuesday morning of next week. Uh, to be prepared to be in front of the conservation commission to uh, ask them to act. Um, at their hearing um, next week, but now if there's going to be a site walk. Um. You know, I I suppose, um, if if I could, I mean, the the timing is a very important component of this project. We have. Ninety-five or more percent of everything complete as I stand here today. Uh, with a high expectation that we are going to be complete and ready to submit by Tuesday morning of all recommendations. Except for possibly a fence or a conversation that would come out of a site meeting. Um, that I believe if that site work were to have, that site walk were to happen after the um, after we submit the plans. That some form of a conditional approval could be written in to the decision without a revised plan potentially, but.
No, considering the scope of the mitigation, we talked, I haven't even looked at a colored landscape plan. There's no way to tell about the adequacy. I'm looking at black and white. We require color. I don't know what happened with why we didn't get the plans served.
Right. Mr. Chairman, we we submitted color plans as part of the the development package. There's a color, a full color plan for landscaping. To show materials and there's as well in the development package work.
I saw it on the screen. And and frankly, I think that um, that that um.
Chairman.
I think we're going to go with the eighth.
Mr. Chairman, I have the um, the colored set is in my hands. And then eleven by seventeen set. I don't have the full size set. I do have the house in my hand.
So Dan, I yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused as far as what, because Joe got a full size set of plans as opposed to the scaled down. So. Mr. Chairman, I mean, I don't, I don't have a huge issue continuing this to to the twenty-fifth. I mean, even if it's not. If if it's, if if the board, if the board's okay with that, I don't have a huge problem with the twenty-fifth, um. You know, as you know, it may not be totally done on the twenty-fifth, but. You know, if there's enough significant progress, so um. You know, it's up to the pleasure of the board. I don't have a big problem with the twenty-fifth, but if the board feels that needs the extra time, then that's fine as well.
I think considering this, a project of this scope and the impact on the area that. That a couple of weeks, considering the Concom, it's, is this the first reading Attorney Cremens?
I'm sorry?
Is this the first meeting with the Concom or the second?
We had our first meeting last week with the Concom, Mr. Chairman, and then we will continue to to their meeting of next week.
Did you get comments from the conservation agent?
We have, yes.
Well, I I, I don't see how if we met Wednesday of next week, you could have plans ready for Thursday. Uh, which would have, which is our deadline for the twenty-fifth hearing. So that's where I was coming from when I said the eighth.
Yeah.
It gives people back, some time to go back and forth on things and to smooth out all the, all the details. It gives the. Mr. Horst from the engineering department apart, some time to go through the uh, your comments and make sure everything is addressed. Because we are not going to take a project of this magnitude and do it with conditions.
So I'll I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board. If we are going to continue it to April eighth with the extra two weeks, would the board authorize me to begin working on a draft decision? In case all all the comments have been addressed to the satisfaction of the board on April eighth?
Well, I see no problem with that, but that's a big if.
And I understand that, Mr. Chairman, but. If if it's not done by the eighth, then it's not done by the eighth. But if it is done by the eighth. Then we wouldn't have to continue one additional meeting. If it, if things aren't done, we, the board does not have to entertain the decision on that night. But at least have it prepared in case things are, in case things are done. And I don't. I think it's a big if, but I don't think it's a monumental if, so. It doesn't hurt to prepare it, in my opinion. And if it's not ready for the eighth, then it's not ready for the eighth. It 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 gets continued one more meeting.
And again, a lot of points on the Concom as well. Just so that the applicant understands, we don't like to have notations on plans not included in the plans. That are, we close the hearing, we close the plan.
Yeah.
So. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the uh, continue until the eighth of April at seven o'clock. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to continue to April eighth at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. I got a second to that motion. Now, um, roll call vote for the board. Mr. Kaba?
Yes.
Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We'll see you gentlemen on on the eighth at seven o'clock.
That's, I was just going to say that uh, I I'll reach out to John to. Tomorrow, John, will you be in? We can look at the calendar for next week or?
Uh, yeah, I can look at the calendar tomorrow morning, Barry. I mean, that's not, that's not a big deal. And so basically, the task is just to get all the comments addressed before the eighth and um. You know, and be ready to go on the eighth if possible. So I'll draft the decision. Like I said, if we're ready to go on the eighth, then at least we'll have the decision ready to go. And if. Something happens with the Concom or there's still an outstanding comment or two with the planning board, then we can always pull it back and just continue another meeting.
Right. Now, we'll definitely be ready on the eighth and I'll reach out to you tomorrow uh, for scheduling purposes for the site visit.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Kaba, welcome home.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, with that, um, we're going to open up a discussion. Um, on the uh, the work that Mr. Kelly, uh, myself, Mr. Charbonneau. And the downtown task force have been doing with respect to the Stoughton Center District.
Yes.
To that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kaba?
Yes.
Mr. Garland?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, I missed some, Mr. Demuse, I got. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Garland. What did I miss? I asked Mr. Kaba, he already responded.
Yeah.
So I think we have everybody chair votes yes. Um, the item is now in in session, Mr. uh. Charbonneau, do you want to set the scene for us on this? Give us a little background.
It shouldn't have to be a long discussion tonight, Mr. Chairman, because. We are literally getting down to the the last couple of items. Um, at the last downtown task force meeting, there were some um. There were some things discussed and there were some minor modifications made. Um. You know, I sent, I sent the most recent revision to everyone on the board, I believe, earlier this week. Um, so I guess um, the the only couple of issues, I know that um, myself. Mr. Kelly and Mr. Scardino have a phone conversation tomorrow morning with the consultant to go over the. Remaining issues and one of them is simply um, finishing up the signage. I know that in the most recent draft that the board saw, board saw of the signage, there was um. Regulation of temporary signs and we're still trying to iron that out because it. Regulating temporary signs is a very delicate thing because. I've been told by the consultant that all the regulations um, have to be consistent for all types of temporary signs. In other words. You know, they can't be different for political signs versus other side, grand opening signs and things like that. So. We're going to talk about that tomorrow morning and um, the other matter that we're looking to finish up and. Dan, I will look to you to briefly um, explain this in a little more detail, but we're. Still try uh, trying to come up with something that would create a regulation in instances where. Um, somebody wants to turn a vacant lot into a parking lot in a, in a more residential area. So Dan, if you could just explain that quickly.
So what's happened is is because we don't allow commercial lots. In the area, what it's going to do is we're, we're afraid that people are going to have separate lots. That they're not going to be able to be properly zoned because they're going to, we're going to be outside of the zoning. So what we're looking to do is to create a, and and it, either an accessory use to the lots or. Create a separate area where we'd allow private parking lots. Not so much in the core area, but in the flex and or the transition area. So that we, people would be allowed to have remote parking, per the parking regulation that allows. Within five hundred feet and thirteen hundred feet with a special permit. That would allow that. So there's some caveats to that. And some, you know, people thinking that there may be some issues around that. Uh, we're trying to look at the legal side of it and also look at the practical side of of people, whether they would actually do that. But. There is, there is a um. There is a a a demand for be able to have some parking for existing buildings. We're looking to modify that, the uh, the number of parking required for existing buildings, but that's still, will require parking. For residential units within those buildings. And if there isn't enough. Property on the um, the site to be able to put parking, we're going to need to have remote parking. How we create that? We need to be able to, the zoning violate, the zoning laws need to have um, some consistency to it. So I think by allowing it, you know, a parking lot or some sort of parking area that's remote from the building. In a private fashion, that's not being either sold or or rented on a daily basis for commercial time. That would be what we'd be looking at, whether it be in single ownership with a, with a single property. So that that's, that's really the discussion. And um, I think we're just about coming down to some legal. Use and maybe some proper wording to make that happen, so.
And the other, the other thing that the consultant is working on, their their graphic designer. Um, the three D rendering that I had shown you gentlemen before was a good representation. However, I've gotten. Some comments that the location of that three D rendering may be a little bit controversial. When it gets presented to the public. So we, I'm having the consultant pick another location in the downtown. To depict that three D rendering, something that would be um. You know, a little less controversial. Bless you, Dan. Thank you. So that's the only other thing. So yeah, we really are down to the last few fine points. And then. Once we have these things ready, we could talk about scheduling a public forum and get public feedback on the bylaws. So. Um, to Dan's point about parking, one thing that was um, discussed at the task force was. I know Dan made a recommendation in the last draft regarding um. Giving, given additional uh, parking relief to existing, existing buildings. So that was discussed and a simple so- solution to that was. Um, for the flex and the transition, we've, we've uh, they switched the minimum parking to one space per unit. Um, none for guests. And then in the core, it's a half a space per residential unit. So it gives a little bit of a break in the core. For required residential parking. So I think it makes it simpler. Um, you know, a little less math involved and it, it takes care of what um, what Dan was trying to accomplish with his suggestions. So um. So we're getting down to it and it's nice to be, you know, getting to the end of the fine details, but I think uh. I think we're in good shape and I um, once we come out of the conversation tomorrow. I think probably next week, we can talk about scheduling a public forum um, to roll this out to the public and. Um, the message I'm trying to send to everybody is, this has been vetted pretty thoroughly. We had, you know, a great response to. A survey, eight hundred people. It's been vetted before. The planning board, the downtown task force, the working group, even the SRA. So. I think it's coming down, once we roll this out to the public, I think it's important for everyone to get behind this because, you know, it's not going to be possible to have. Everything everybody would like to see in this bylaw. Um, we're trying to very hard to get a consensus on these things. The bylaw will not, will not be perfect, but it's, it doesn't, it's. No bylaw is perfect. We're trying to keep up with. Um, what's happening in the private sector. It's impossible to be ahead of it, but we're trying to do the best we can to catch up. So. Knowing that there may be some things in this bylaw over the next couple of years that we may have to tweak a little bit. Especially with um, circumstances changing once we come out of COVID. Um, retail is certainly going to change. Office demand might change, so. There may be some things as a result of that that may have to be tweaked and that's okay. That's okay, but we we we're certainly going to have something on the books that's much better. And encourages tasteful development more than what we have on the books right now.
Anybody else? Um, anybody have any comments about the, uh, I know you just got the draft, John, I think a day or two.
Yeah, a couple of days ago, yeah. So you could forward any questions to me at any time, as long as it's filtered through me. Um, and I can, I can distribute it to the uh, to the other board members. So um, that won't violate any open meeting law or anything. So. If you want to forward any questions or comments to me, please feel free.
And I guess I said, just a buttress what John says, as long as you don't hit reply all, you're all set.
Yes.
So um, with that, I'm going to, we're going to move to the minutes and can I have a motion to hear the minutes of February eleventh, twenty twenty-one?
So may.
Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Kaba?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and I see that Mr. Charbonneau has already cranked up the minutes. And um. I will, I will tell you that I've looked them over and I think that they were very well done, but um, I will let. You go through them with with Mr. Charbonneau and satisfy yourself, sir.
Oh, I think Tisdale is spelled wrong.
Where? No, that's the way he spells his name.
D L L E?
Where's that?
Uh, right in the middle of that, right after the bullets?
No, it's D E L L E.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. That's a unique spelling. There's a wine that's, that's spelled differently that says Tisdale Wine. Oh, we've come a long way, Paul's name is now spelled right, so.
Yeah, no capital M.
And I was even asked to put my name in when I came to this meeting tonight. Usually it just had my initials.
Ah.
See, our, our software is getting better.
All right, so that's it.
That is it, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kaba, roll call vote, Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaba?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous approval. Thank you. And Mr. Charbonneau, anything else?
No, that's it, so at the next meeting, we have, we have three public hearings scheduled. We have the special permit for Bob's Furniture sign. We have the continuation of 19 Camden Street, we have the public hearing for the rezoning of Mr. Kelly's property on Pleasant Street.
Did we get a, something from Town Council, if the selectmen have to approve the deletion of those paper streets on, off of Camden?
I haven't got, gotten it, um, yes, actually, we did get an opinion that they do have to do a title search, Paul, and they do have to go through that, a simple A and R will not take care of it, so. We did get an opinion from them and the attorney for the applicant is working on that right now.
So they should be prepared and have that ready for us, so they can get approved next meeting maybe?
Uh, well, they haven't filed with Concom yet. So they have not even started with Concom, so shame on them, I mean, the original application got submitted over a year ago.
I was on the zoning board when they came to the zoning board, it's all a year and a half ago.
Needs to be disclosed, Mr. Demuse, you're on both sides of this case.
It took them about seven months to get revised plans when it was deemed incomplete, so they you know, they have not even gone before the Concom yet, so this is going to be one of those that we try to avoid where it may have to be continued out of our agenda until they get done with Concom, so. You know, certainly, what I sent around for the procedures certainly encourages, strongly encourages them to file with the Concom either concurrently or before they come to the planning board, but we can't make them, so it's to their own detriment if they don't.
Right, I was just looking out to see if, you know, we could get them moved along, but they're, they're dragging their feet, they're dragging their feet.
Yeah, you can only do so much.
It's like that old song, drag in the line.
Yeah.
Anyway, with that, our next meeting is the 25th, as John indicated. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Okay, roll call, roll call vote, Mr. Garland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaba?
Yes.
Mr. Demuse?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, with that, I wish everybody that, watching, a good evening on, from the Stoughton Planning Board. See you on the 25th at seven o'clock.
Thank you, gentlemen. Tomorrow morning.